Okay, seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Oh, is it? Not yet. Well, is it seven o'clock?
Are we showing up yet? We're still home. No, we're not.
Well, anyway, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Okay, any none. Somebody wish to move the bylaws, the agendas presented? Any question on last motion? Any none? Call the question. Okay, so it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the minutes of May 13th. Any questions, errors, missions, concerns? Okay, virtually moves. Any question on George Lee's motion? Any none, I'll call the question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the delegation. So Betty and Mary are here, so if you'd like to come to the front and I think if you can explain, then you've got 15 minutes to explain your concerns.
You want to start, or should I start?
I don't care.
What I want to ask is, why do they not check the people when they come into town, when they get a license? Why they don't get checked? It said, I went to my lawyer today to find out what was going on. And he said you have to give them 48 hours, they have to go to a person's house, and you have to give them 48 hours. Not within an hour, get your payment done that you didn't even want done. And they have you signing things and threaten you to take you to court if you don't do anything. So that's what always happened to me. But I just wanted to find out why they get a license soon, they come into town, why they don't get checked out, and why they don't go to the, you know, Better Bureau of Law takes to find out what these guys are like. That's what I want to find out. I was talking to you.
Yes.
But anyway, I just wanted to know how that happens so fast.
Well, I have a business license in about four communities, and not one of them have ever asked me for anything other than my, you know, the credentials that I give them. I'm not sure if they check it out or not, but I don't think they do. I think that most business licenses are on the merits of what the bylaws states of what they can and they can't do within, you know, within their parameters.
Shouldn't they give you 48 hours to make a decision whether you want to accept something?
Yeah, how they operate their business really truly has nothing to do with the way the town operates and, you know, I mean, I would say that, you know, the majority of the people that have business licenses in most of the communities are very, you know, upfront and honest and forward, but there are always going to be some
Cistries?
Groups that come to your community. And a lot of times, we're, you know, we're lucky, some do take out business license, a lot of them don't. They come in and they do their, sell their wares or do their things, and then they leave the community without even the community knowing that, you know, the town knowing that they had come, so.
Well, I got, I got a thing in my post office, Bob, saying that they do sidewalks and stuff. And I, my driveway is cracked, so I thought, well, I'll make an appointment, so I did. I made an appointment, I phoned them, and I said, I would like you to come and give me an estimate. So they said, we're going to be in Vulcan for 14 days, we have a whole bunch of appointments, so we'll stop in, so they did. But, in the meantime, Terry also had phoned and made an appointment. After she made the appointment, she phoned the Better Business Bureau. They hadn't heard of them. So then, well, first she phoned the town office to see if they had a license, and they said, no, they don't have a license. Then she phoned the Better Business Bureau. They had never heard of them. So then she phoned her granddaughter in Calgary, and had, because there was a Calgary address on this poster. So she phoned, she phoned Celia, and Celia phoned the city. They'd never heard of them. Now that took all of probably maybe half an hour for her to find out all that stuff. So she phoned me and told me. I canceled my appointment. Because then it was just, I talked to a human the first time, and then it was just an answer machine. Terry canceled her appointment. And then they came into town, and of course came to my door, and I said, no. I canceled my appointment, and they said, no, that's fine. But we'll still give you an estimate. So they looked at my sidewalk, or my driveway, and he said, $3,000. I said, no, can't afford that. So he kept looking, and finally said, $2,500. I said, no, I don't want it done. So they left, he left. Pretty soon another guy came about 15 minutes later, and he said, I understand, they gave you an estimate of $3,000. He said, I'll give it, you for two. I said, no, I don't want it. And they finally left, but they were going door to door. But it took, it took Terry all, I guess that, all of probably 15 minutes to find out all that information. So why couldn't the town find that out before they gave my license?
Well, I think that it's, I don't think that we have the right to refuse a person to take out a business license. I think it's up to the, 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 um, person, the buyer, or the, to make sure that
I didn't even ask them.
You know, to make sure that they, they, to do your due diligence on that side, to make sure. Like, I don't belong to the Better Business Bureau. It costs me $1,000 a year to belong to the Better Business Bureau. And so I don't participate as my business. I would bet that probably 90% of the businesses in this community don't participate in the Better Business Bureau because of the cost. And again, you know, every municipality has different rates for their business licenses and for, but yeah, so anyway.
One of the main reasons for the business license is based on the criteria of doing research on them. No new business would ever be able to start up because they have no history.
You mean if they're starting out to do business forever in town?
Yeah, like, well, it's like Betty, you decide you wanted to open up a flower store. You have no history of a flower store, so how would we recommend to anybody that?
You should have a license or not.
Yeah.
So the license itself allows people to work in town. It doesn't say what kind of work they do. So I'll give you one of the best examples. Complaint-based, if we had, if we polled business licenses based on complaints from people, we have businesses in town that wouldn't have a business license either. And it's the, so the license just allows us people to commit. You guys, obviously, Terry, through, did your due diligence and did the right thing. And as I talked to Mary about that as well, when we give out a business license, all that means is they have an Alberta license, a business license number, that they are, they are a registered business. So, and that's what we use on our application, and if they have been vetted by the province, the province does the same thing, they give them that number, but they don't investigate them either.
So they can go from town to town and
They can't, but having said that, as they do that, the word of mouth, and that's the conversation that we've had, they were only in town for one day.
Yeah, but they had on the poster, they were going to be in town 14 days.
Right.
Right, and based on, based on the information
I didn't get enough.
Based on the information that traveled through town, they only stayed for one.
Yeah, and there are a couple people that had some work done that are quite satisfied.
Oh yeah, that's true. And they told me if I didn't do what they wanted me to do, they would take me to court.
Yeah, and again, it's just, well, scare tactics to a degree, I mean, you know what I mean? And unfortunately, you know, there are courses that, you know, are offered to talk about, you know, it's, you know, the pressures that they put you under trying to make you sign, and unfortunately, they go after people that are, you know, need something done, and so consequently, you feel like it's, you know, you're kind of forced to do it. Unfortunately, you know, our hands are tied to to a degree. I mean, at least they did come and get a business license, which is one up over a lot.
So they must have got the business license that day.
They did.
They might have, yeah.
They did.
And again, too, you know, most municipalities offer one-day business licenses, one-week business licenses. You know, there's ones for hawkers, there's one for, you know, door-to-door salesmen, there's a whole variety and difference.
So what that one, excuse me, before that one, one day there, what they did is they tried to go and get as many people in, and the faster they could get in there, and didn't give you time to think or anything, they just, and then I don't understand, some they charge seven, some they charge eight, some they charge 10, but 12 for me. I mean, I don't understand. I mean, I have to tell, anyway, this is horrible.
Yeah, no, I, you know, we, I personally definitely sympathize for you folks that, you know, that got, had an opportunity to get taken in, but I honestly don't know what we as a municipality can do, because, like I said, you know, I know personally of the business licenses I have, how much work they do or don't do, I don't have a clue. All I know is that they
So they can't be stuck?
Theoretically, the only way is if somebody has, takes them to court over it, and, you know, and gets a good enough of judgment on them that, you know, the company, but again, too, you know, they could change their name tomorrow and open up as a different group, so.
If I can, they, companies like that do that, they change their name, and they travel.
How many little houses?
This, this is one thing, they came and got a business license so that they did look legitimate to, to folks like yourselves. And if, if we had an invasive process where it took three, four days to get a business license, they just wouldn't have got one, and would have still done the same thing.
Yeah.
We would allow, that would allow us and our peace officer to go after them. But we, as a community, even as small as we are, we don't hear about it until they're actually doing work in someone. We, Mary, you were good enough to tell us right after they left. And that helped us get that word out there for everybody else as well. But, but from a municipal standpoint, if somebody comes through the door, and they have a, they have a registered company, they can have a business license in the town of Vulcan.
They had a lot of equipment, they had half tons with their name on the doors. I don't know how many, there was two white ones that I saw in a big truck and
All together with six guys. And they come in and they walk in and they look, and they, and if she came in and they were looking, yeah, you start to get intimidated by all these people when they come here, and you don't know what to do, and they, they go so fast, you don't even know what hit you. And then, then they charge, they pay $12,000 for what? Locking my door, and he said, the door opens, so he ripped the door open, and he said, see, it opens, and I tore the door apart too. So, and when it was raining, it was coming into my house.
Yeah, no, you know, it's, it's, it's too bad there are companies and people out there that, you know, kind of prey on I hate to say vulnerable, but the, you know, the vulnerable of our society, and, you know, it is disappointing. But I don't honestly know how we as a municipality can, you know, govern that.
Well, I, I was just here to, I thought there would be a, like Terry did, a check on them before you give a license out. But you know.
And that's the due diligence of the consumer?
Yeah.
From a community standpoint, we have to allow them to do business. What kind of business? And that's where council will discuss later, and it was provided as part of the agenda package. One thing for, in our bylaws, we can revoke a business license based on breaking of public trust, which obviously, and, you know, is, is going to be part of council's conversation with this particular company.
So if you had refused their license,
It wouldn't mean anything.
They would have still
They would have went to work.
There's a good chance that they were, had already done half of the, the work prior to getting a business license too. I mean, we have no, you know, until somebody almost says something, I mean, there's a group in town today doing paving up in the West Grand Creek.
Yeah, I see that.
It's, it's not the same company, but it's, it's another firm. And the town hires people to do, and, and we've had, you know, good and bad relationships with some of them too, and
But like this, like, to me, if they're going to pave your driveway, it's with that hot stuff, you know, that they do the streets with. This was not. This was, it was done in, they just dumped it and finished it with hers, and it's that stuff that you fill the holes with on the street, you know? So it'll last five minutes.
Yeah, and then unfortunately, you know, I mean, like I said, you're
I didn't need it on the driveway. My driveway was perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Anyway, now he said the cracks, and it's like you have a payment, you have these lines in there where they made the, you know, certain area where they paved it. And so I had it done 2005, it was, there's nothing wrong with my driveway. But he said there's these ridges there, and I'm thinking, they're supposed to be there. That's how it was made from the beginning. And he said, you can fill these cracks, and next thing I know, they get you.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, I, you know, I don't know what, you know.
I know.
I see, you know, I guess it's like when, you know, when you purchase some things, you know, if you have an opportunity to just say no, and it, if it comes back the next day, and you're able to say yes, or, you know, have a time to think about it, you know, usually then you kind of semi-vetted them that way. But when they want you to sign on the dog line instantly, unfortunately, you know, it's a bit of a buyer's beware. And unfortunately, there are some in the community that, you know.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get took with them. But I'm here to support Mary, but I was just concerned about the
The process.
The license, licensing, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, and again, like I said, you know, I know that the other communities have the same process for licensing. You walk in the door, you show your credentials and pay your amount, and, and they, and then once you get into the system, they'll send you a bill every year and ask for you to participate again, so. So.
Just, so you're aware, I just Googled them online, you know, and looking for reviews, and someone gave them a 4.5 star rating out of 5.
You're kidding.
That could be someone just doing it from their own company doing it, so. It, unfortunately, it is, but at least you came in and told the town, so when other people come in and say, and they ask, you know, is such and such a company, they've done work in town before, would you recommend them?
We consider that we have other people that have had some issues.
That's why making us aware was so important.
See, that's what worries me though, is that they're going to go to Carmen Gay or Claire's Home.
And they do.
They do.
If you get Carmen Gay, they wouldn't need a business license.
Champion, they don't need a business license.
And just, that, to me, is wrong, am I?
Absolutely. That's why getting the word out there.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so unfortunately, you know, and I know that you've talked to a lawyer, Mary, and that's probably the best other bet you can do too, is that, you know, to see what direction you can go on that side of it, so. But like I said, I was at another person's place, and they had theirs done, and they were quite pleased, so it's
They probably wanted it too.
I don't, I assume so, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, the one in Allen subdivision, I went and looked, it was a double driveway. Hers was a single, cost her $10,000. I'd like to know. If I knew those people, I'd go and ask them to see what it costs for the double. Because mine was going to be $3,000, but they got it down to $2,000. And yet she paid, how did, how could they?
That's a conversation for that company.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I think that was a question that, you know, that, you know, hopefully that, you know, if your legal team will be able to help you out on, so. Anyway, any other questions for Mary or Betty? Well, thank you very much for coming. Sorry, we don't have any good words of wisdom for you.
That's good, I got it off the chest.
Oh, that's good. Well, thank you very much.
Betty, thank you.
And you're more than welcome to stay if you like.
That's okay. I love her, she's nice.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Vulcan regional response to elder abuse, which we just saw here earlier. A level of elder abuse. And unfortunately, it's a little different than what I think you're going to speak on, but maybe very similar.
Vulnerable population.
Yeah, but again, unfortunately, that's what some people work on, is vulnerable. You know, whether it's someone we know or somebody we don't, but anyway, the floor is yours.
My name is Ruth Wheeler. I work for Alberta Health Services, and my role is community development coordinator. I work in Claire's Home, Napton, and Vulcan on a half-time basis. And what I do is I come alongside communities and help them promote health in whatever ways they choose to do so. And one of the areas that I was working in Claire's Home on was responding to elder abuse in a coordinated fashion. And I'll get into that a little bit later as to, let's fill you in on what's going on in that direction with Vulcan. So let's start with the video. So what is elder abuse? Elder abuse is a single or repeated act of, or lack of appropriate action occurring within a relationship where there is an expectation of trust, that's key in there, which causes harm or distress to an older person. This type of violence constitutes a violation of human rights and includes physical, sexual, psychological, emotional, and spiritual abuse, financial and material abuse, abandonment, neglect, and serious loss of dignity and respect. So let's, we'll go over the various ones that we as a group here in Vulcan have identified that where we want to be watched for and responding to. Physical abuse, an action that causes physical discomfort, pain, or injury. And the signs would be fractures, burns, bruises, pulled hair. Sexual abuse, unwanted sexual behavior including sexual comments, exploitive pornography, fondling, or sexual assault. Signs would include bruising around the breasts or genital area, depression, and anxiety. Emotional abuse, actions or statements that cause emotional anguish, fear, diminished self-esteem or dignity. Signs would be depression, anxiety, change in movement behavior. Spiritual, is a form of emotional and psychological abuse, characterized by systematic pattern of coercive and controlling behavior in a religious context. Signs would be manipulation and exploitation, enforced accountability, censorship of decision-making, requirement of secrecy or silence. Financial abuse is the misuse of a senior's funds or property through fraud, trickery, theft, or force. Signs would be missing money or belongings, irregularities in bank accounts, living conditions that do not match income. Financial abuse is by far the most common of all the abuses, found across Canada and also in Alberta. And I don't want to speak to this situation because I know nothing of it, but I just saw the impact on these two ladies where they had, it sounded to me like mistreated. And I can't imagine if it's family or within a trust relationship, there was a trust relationship here as well. But when it's in a relationship of family or neighbors, someone that you should be able to rely on, and they take advantage of you, it becomes absolute devastating. Neglect, the intentional or unintentional failure to provide the basic needs of someone. Signs would be dehydration, malnutrition, poor hygiene, bed sores. Medication abuse, the intentional or unintentional misuse of medications and prescriptions, such as withholding or providing doses that cause bodily harm, sedation, or other adverse effects. Signs would be prescriptions and are missing, that's typo, I'm sorry, empty or unused. This one often surprises people, but medications can be used to sedate a senior so that they don't become as much of a bother. They can, sometimes medications, placebos or others are given, and then the prescribed medications are kept for themselves and sold. It can be done in many, many different ways. So what are the risk factors? Social isolation, when somebody's alone, they often lose sight of what's normal, and what's fair, and what should be done. And it also allows for the perpetrator to do things unnoticed by, other than by the senior. If there's a lack of support, if there's no one that this senior can hold to, the elder can hold to, then you're at bigger risk. Caregiver stress, as a group, we have decided that we also want to pay attention to somebody who might be doing the abuse, because maybe they've come to a point of absolute exhaustion. And sometimes intervening would be a form of getting home care in so that a family has some degree or some other kinds of support. Caregiver stress is often a trigger. Family dynamics, that goes on to say cognitive impairment, if an elder is not able to process things, or they're rushed in their thinking, or they are purposely confused. If their cognitive thinking is impaired, then it becomes very, it puts them at risk. Living with the abuser, dependency on others, recent worsening health. With the worsening health often comes a compromise in their being able to stand up for themselves. Arguing frequently with relatives, societal attitudes such as ageism. Barriers to reporting elder abuse. There's a significant under-reporting when it comes to elder abuse. As we saw in the video clip, very few are reported, and the estimation is that 1 in 10 elders are being abused. There are many reasons why seniors may be reluctant to talk about the abuse. They might be afraid, maybe things will get worse for them. They might love the abuser, it might be their child. And then how can you report your own child to someone who says they will be able to help you? Dementia, medication, shame, guilt, ethnomal cultural awareness of resource options, or unaware of resource options. And that's often a real big one. Acceptance of abuse is normal. And often abuse, the abuse cycle often starts with something small, and then it grows and becomes a tightening circle around that person who's being abused. And so it often starts very small, before we know it, it's out of hand. And the person who's being abused isn't really even aware of it anymore. So 1 in 10 seniors will experience elder abuse. I've heard different numbers on this, 8% is what the video said, but it's in around that number. Only 25% of elder abuse cases are reported. And that's devastating because that means nothing happens and continues that way. Elder abuse is often committed by someone known to the victim, such as a family member, friend, or caregiver, maybe a neighbor. Any senior can be a victim of elder abuse regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, income, or education. We can all be there someday. So what should you do if you are being abused? If you are in immediate danger, call 911. That's the number one. If you were in immediate danger, call 911, that's the number one. Talk to someone you trust about what is happening to you and keep a daily record, a dating record. In fact, that's why we gave you those notebooks, we've been giving those out in public and saying, keep track of that shit down. And for you, obviously, the more we get the Purple Ribbon, get the awareness in the community, if somebody notices the book, then you can let them know on our coalition. Take legal action, you might want to think about court protection, or court protection order that would stop the abusive person from contact, having contact with you. And don't blame yourself. Part of the abuser's tactics are often to put the blame on the person who's being abused, and that is absolutely false. Know that it is not your fault, help is available. Please ask for help because you do not deserve to be abused. Many groups in their community want to help to protect your rights, safety, and dignity. So, what should you do if someone you know is being abused? We're going to be holding a workshop on June 14th that will go into this in more detail. There's a whole, you know, there's a lot of information on how to respond if we see it. But number one is again, call 911 if there's an immediate danger. Approach the older adult from a place of genuine concern and care. Be truly supportive, not pushing or controlling or judgmental. There's this thing that I've just been writing about lately, it's called the writing reflex. When we see some, first of all, children and all adults, if the load starts taking on us, we write ourselves, we try to stay in a proper position. Then, we see something that's not right, if somebody's being hurt, we want to write that, we want to correct it. But we need to slow down and say that they are the ones who have to decide whether they want help and whether they want the situation to be corrected. The writing reflex also happens to the person who we're trying to help. If we come across to that person in a, in a way that we're telling them what to do, their writing reflex will be to normalize their situation, to say everything's okay and to actually believe it, to defend the position that they're in. So, you're actually doing harm instead of good by pushing too hard, but rather coming alongside and knowing that you're there for them. Having a conversation with someone that you're concerned about, listening carefully. Respect if he or she doesn't want to talk about it, and leave the door open. Again, you don't want to push them because they will want to write themselves and the situation will get worse. If you don't have, sorry, you don't have to solve another person's problem, instead you can be their support. That's very difficult to do because we want to make things better. So, know the signs, break the silence, together we can take, take action against elder abuse. And this is what brings us now to Vulcan. In 2015, the Alberta government came out with a grant proposal that Claire's Home saw and responded to, and they hired a coordinator to help them come together as a group and form a coalition that they would then say, as a group, how can we respond to an abusive situation in a coordinated way? Instead of home care doing their thing, and the social worker doing their thing, the RCMP doing their thing, everybody's working really hard, and we decided there that we'll work as a group and as a team, collective knowledge, everybody putting their heads together and saying, and what about this, I can help here, my agency can help here. So, they developed a response model, and in the last 12 months, or 2018 it would have been, they received 22 referrals. Eleven were from Claire's Home itself, 11 cases were from surrounding areas. The type of abuse that, alleged abuse, were physical, emotional, you can see the numbers beside them, financial, seven, sexual, one, neglect, six, in some cases, more than one type of alleged abuse was mentioned. So, I'm giving the Claire's Home data, which they were very willing to share, just for you to hear what might be going on in Vulcan area. So, a year ago, one of the, I should go back to Claire's Home, they had an information session, a whole day long training, and a citizen from Vulcan came to that, and after that, she said, oh my goodness, what about Vulcan? Vulcan needs this too. The opportunity to apply for the grant was gone, but she really wanted this signal to happen in Vulcan. So, we pulled together, we spoke to a lot of different agencies, these are the ones that are all mentioned, or that we all reached out to, and said, first of all, do you think that elder abuse is an issue here in Vulcan and in the Vulcan region? And the answer was, yes, we really think it is. And then, would you like to work together in a coordinated fashion, or do you think the effective way is for each agency to do their own? Everybody agreed, we need to do it in a coordinated fashion. And so, last May, we had our first meeting, and 60 people, 60 different agencies showed up around the table, the town of Vulcan being one of them. Thank you very much for allowing Michelle to sit at the table with us. So, what have we done up until now? First of all, we developed a mission, I'm going to read the purpose because it's a little bit more clear than the short mission. To be a coordinated response model where we leverage the knowledge, services, and expertise of multiple agencies and individuals, and provide effective and efficient approaches to elder abuse, including the abused, the abuser, and the community. So, it's not just focusing on the abuse, but the abuser as well, and the community saying, what can we do to prevent this? What can we do to raise awareness? And what can we do in a proper response when this does happen? So, accomplishments, so far as we did develop the terms of reference, it took quite a bit of time for us, everybody around the table, to agree on a definition. There's a provincial one, there's a federal one, and there's also the World Health Organization. And it's the World Health Organization one that we set upon and made a little bit of revision to it, decided how we'd make decisions. You're very familiar with terms of references, and that took a lot of work, but it was a very good, strong foundation for us to move forward. We developed a response model, and I gave you a copy of that, it's a paper with a lot of due diligence, just to give you an idea of if we hear and when we hear about a situation in Vulcan, Vulcan region, how would we respond? In the first line of response, if there is immediate danger, would be to the RCMP, absolutely. And they have sat at the table at each and every meeting, and have been very involved with this whole process as well. If it's not an emergency, then the call would go to the victim's services or Rowan House. Those two were chosen because they're 24-hour lines. And victim's services right here in Vulcan is probably the one that most people will feel comfortable with. We gave Rowan House as well, and Rowan House from, from High River was willing to have their name on there as well because of 24-hour call, and because maybe anonymity might be a little bit easier. So, we thought two options is better than just the one. When the Rowan House or victim's services is contacted by anyone, anyone from the team, anyone from the community, or a victim themselves, that Nicole Larson would be the person. She would decide who of the agencies that are sitting around the table should be included in this conversation, starting at a very minimum, thinking maybe just two agencies, maybe three will keep it very minimal. And then, they will meet behind closed doors and decide how can they best serve this person? If more than those two or three agencies are required, they will pull in small people. The privacy is of utmost importance, the process that we have chosen, I won't go into the whole detail, but it's been vetted by AHS Privacy and Legal, and they have given permission for AHS workers to use this process. So, we know that it's sound and secure and that you can put your trust in that. We've developed brochures, oh, there's our, sorry, our response model. We've developed brochures that we're putting out in the community. We have also received permission from the town to do what we're calling our Purple Ribbon Campaign, and we're going to be putting those brochures all within the town, and just want to get the word out. Sorry, can I go, oh, there we go, yes, those are some of the brochures. We've submitted an application to become a society. We've attended two trade and services expos. Right now, we are working on the World Health Elder Abuse Day, it's June 15th, the Purple Ribbon Campaign, and towards the end of that, on June 14th is when we're holding a public forum, time where we're particularly inviting people who might, in the public sphere, see cases of abuse, like hairdressers, bank managers, those kinds of people who might come across it. Give them some education around how to respond to what they see, and let them know about our services and what we're able to do. We will be applying for grants once we get our society status, we're already looking at some of those. And we're seeking support from the community, financial and letters of support. What we want to do is, we want to hire a coordinator. We have victim's services that's going to be taking the response to particular situations on, and all the paperwork, everything's going to be held at the RCMP detachment, so again, security to highest. But we need a coordinator to do what I have done up until this point, is pulling the group together, holding meetings, saying, what's next? How do we want to get the word out? What do we want to do for prevention and that kind of thing? My role does not permit me to stay at that role, I'll stay at the table, but I can't continue to be the coordinator. My role is to turn it back to the community and to say, now, how would you like to sustain this? And so, again, for education and awareness raising, planning and implementing initiatives to reduce ageism and prevent elder abuse from happening, seeking continued community support. So, what are we asking from you at this time? The first point, I wasn't in there, and basically, I want to thank you for allowing Michelle to come, and always having one representative at the table if Michelle isn't able to be there. And we're asking for, for you to assign permanent representation at the table from here on in. I know you gave the years' commitment, and we'd like you to consider them going forward. We are also asking for, I know this is a big request, but it's $10,000 annually to go towards a coordinator salary and mileage. Now, it would be part-time, and we are also going to be asking other groups for that, and we thought by the time we are able to put that financial, those finances together, we'd be able to go ahead and hire somebody. We are also asking for $500 towards promotional items such as banners, table skirts, that kind of thing, when we go to expos. It would just be nice to have a visual presence, and then people who see it go, oh yeah, they're there, and then it might come to mind when we're needed to respond, that they would do that by connecting with us. And also letters of support as we start applying for grants and grant funding. I have put those requests in a letter that I gave to Kim, and I know that you've been timed to consider those things. I've also included in that letter, draft of a job description, what that would entail. And thank you for being willing to look at that further. So, basically, we're trying to get people to know the signs, know the symptoms, and know what to do about it, because together we can make a difference. I guess today was just such an example of when somebody's been taken advantage of. It's heartbreaking, absolutely heartbreaking. So, any questions?
Boy, you must have done a good job, no questions.
Ruth, on something like we just saw tonight, what would be your guidance? Would you, would you take, consider that an elder abuse case and take it into your coalition and have Nicole decide who should be at the table, or is that, is that separate?
This would have, and again, I don't know the whole situation.
And I don't either, yeah.
I shouldn't. But just a little bit that I heard, I would definitely say, make a call to Nicole, and then allow Nicole to pull together people to say, how can we help? It sounds to me like it was a buyer beware thing, but she needs, might need support, and maybe their, maybe their home care, social worker might be able to come and get involved. Maybe from this, like, I'm just thinking, as a group, as I heard some of this, wouldn't it be something to invite that person to say, let's encourage seniors, the buyers beware? So, there's a grant coming up down the future that we're looking at applying for, that is where we want to involve seniors in making a difference in their community. I would love to see women, men that have been taken advantage of say, I want to get the word out, I want to tell other seniors that we want to make a difference. So, yes, I would say, let, for us to hear about it, and to have the group, whoever Nicole pulls together, decide how to support her and what we might do prevention-wise.
So, would this be a case where Mary should phone Nicole, or should this be a town thing that would phone Nicole, or?
Either way, anybody can call. It could be Mary, it could be one of you, it could be anybody. It could be that Nicole already knows about it. But yes, you're very welcome to call, and in fact, I can, I can talk to Nicole about it a little bit, but because I don't know the details, and my thing is, I don't want to know the details, I'm not a service provider. So, my thing right away would be to encourage that person to go directly to Nicole.
And our Vice Officer does not, and is a member of them.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to go over and give us the information.
Can I steal a copy of that, put it on the, on our website?
Absolutely, yes. There's a typo on there.
That's all right.
If I can correct that. Can I just pull out my flashcards? You need to check it first.
Thank you very much, Ruth. And this is the gal that runs the most amazing meetings you've ever seen.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, I am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good Sunday.
Yeah, you too, thanks. Okay, moving on to 5.1, the Nobleford Heritage Society invites us to their parade on July the, what, I have it right there?
20.
Pardon?
20.
20, thank you. There it is. So, anyway, there's an opportunity for us to attend another parade if so desired, and...
Most parades don't shine on the fact of handing out candy, this one, oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, they say handing out, it says free candy parade, it doesn't say that they're going to throw it, or whether they're going to hand it out.
Well, it says that you're encouraged, that you can bring your own candy to hand out, but it's not a requirement.
So, you can keep it all.
Yeah.
That's what it says.
So, anyway, that's some information if we want to participate. Any comments, questions?
Should, they should be, let know whether we are or aren't coming.
We do, based on...
Yeah, I think if we're able to get people to want to go and participate in it, then it's great, then we'll move forward on that, but if not, like, I mean, this is probably one of our 10th one this year. I think once we start to go to a few more parades and get a more of a pattern going, we'll see that we'll even get more invitations, essentially.
And it's real, too close.
Falls out, yeah, so.
And Nobleford's not that big, so walking a parade would probably wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Make a motion to you and yourself.
Do we have a challenger? What moves?
Bonnie's keeping it.
Running town.
Running town, the ones where, she's, she's doing the coordination.
So, we can...
We will, as we, we're getting very close, we'll send out to council, because of course you guys are key to the making the parade go, or the vote go, so.
I'll make that motion that we, I just have their invitation. There is no other one that'd be?
I don't know, I don't think so.
Yeah, so I guess we'd have to have that calendar.
If you would make your motion to have Bonnie coordinate and attending the parade if possible, that would cover that. Okay. Community Service Manager.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
We need to have a motion on that. We'll just send it out for a second.
Okay, so Judge Lee moves that we participate if it works out. Any question on Judge Lee's motion? And I'll call a question. Sorry, Karen?
My laptop died. Yes, it was late.
We'll send the bill motion.
And Michelle's laptop, computer type.
You want to, uh, charge it?
That would be awesome.
I'm not the only one.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, it was from the guy in hurry.
Yeah. From my house to here.
I think she's carrying the charger.
Okay, so that was Karen, now just thank you. Moving on to New Laffbridge Foundation, Community Foundation, Laffbridge and Southwest of Albrother. So, it's just a update on... It's just a couple of, just for information, let's see what. Okay, any questions? And I know that the Marcus Foundation did give a... Yeah, and so did the Lions Club got some money, the Spok Day's got some money for, so there's been two or three. There is a kind of a local flavor that has put money towards this Laffbridge Community Foundation too, so that they've invested and have been able to give out some funds. And I think they give out twice in a year, I believe, and so...
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that or comments? Okay, then we'll move on to the business license by law. I'm not sure, hopefully everybody had heard of what the unfortunate situation that happened to Mary Elias and you can see how she was, kind of felt like she was forced into signing the documents and going forward, whereas Betty, you know, took that sober thought and said no the first time and then no the second time and no the third time. So it's unfortunate, but it seemed to me that they always go after our vulnerable in the community.
And that's part of elder abuse.
Well, it's part of abuse period. I mean, it's just sad, but...
And there was another person in our community that raised concerns that they're not an elder.
No, no.
In their, in the forties. That raised similar concerns after having work completed. So this wasn't a targeted thing, but it was also, again, a one-day thing. And the best thing that we could do is make people aware of that.
And I don't know if it's how an opportunity to go through the business license by law, but you know, it's pretty straightforward. I'm sure it's very similar to most communities. I don't know how we could vet it, you know, and still allow, you know, hopefully, you know, new and, we would rather have them listed on our, and we know that they're there than we have a way around too, so.
And one thing that we wanted to do through this is knowing that the concerns were coming and it was fairly public, making sure that council knew the options available. That's why we did the excerpts from the, from the bylaw, letting you know that these are the reasons why a business license can be revoked or pulled. The only one that we felt would even be close was the licenser applicant is not worthy of public trust. Of course, we found that out after the fact. But something also to consider is, you know, there's businesses within our community that have had business license long-term and, you know, if, like Lyle says, you go on and check their five-star ratings, they aren't all five-stars. So those are the things to consider. The business license is a way of us tracking who is doing business in town, not how they're doing business. That's, and that's a shame, but I think that was the point that the ladies were trying to make is we're not consciously checking what quality of work people are doing. And from a community standpoint, that would be a pretty hard thing for us to start doing because everybody has a different level of quality.
I guess it's really not much different in a way than going to buy a car or something and...
Anything, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've had...
Or they purchase it.
We've had this in our community in the past with furnace cleaning people, you know, and there's, there are, for lack of a better term, untrustworthy companies that come in and, and in most cases, they don't get business licenses. The shame about this one is that they got a business license and when they presented themselves to the people in the public, they, they use that business license as you should trust us because we have a business license. That was kind of the downfall for that. Having said that, we are a small community and the first thing that I said to Mary when she talked to me about it is we will always give our opinion of a company when they come in to get a business license. If we haven't heard from them, we will ask them to check references, those sort of things. If we have used them personally and they, you know, and we have some experience, we can pass on our experiences with them, so. Sometimes living in a small town is really good, sometimes we have to learn lessons our way. So we present you with this information, a quick report on just the background of it, and you can either receive it for information or in this certain circumstance, if you feel that their business license should be restricted or revoked, you can do that as well. That's all.
Did they take out more than a one-day business license?
They took out a year.
A year.
And of course, haven't been back in town since.
But you did say that someone did have good work.
Well, I was at the person's place and he was breaking the road to his driveway and he said they were...
So it's kind of hard to revoke it then if you've got one...
And again, I don't know what he paid and, you know, the, the quality of the driveway looked very decent. I mean, I, he lives up from Lyle there and, you know, his major concern was they've been a bit of a mess on the street, you know, where they dumped their asphalt or whatever, but, but anyway, I haven't seen Mary's, I've just heard about hers.
I went and looked this weekend at all the spots that had asphalt in them and we did receive two complaints, but there was, as Tom said, there was more than that worked up in the community so.
So I don't know if there's something you wish to do with the business license? You, or you just received this for information and...
Can it be flagged so that...
Just, just the fact that we received the complaints helps us, again, it's word about, somebody calls us and asks us, that we, we have, we received a couple complaints about this company.
And because you've got positive responses, I think that's probably as far as you can take it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know certainly at UFA, I had contractors that people would swear by and same contractors they swear at.
Yeah. It's really sad, sad to see that happens, but, you know. Anyway, any more discussion on that? If not, we'll leave that one and then we'll move on to, well, because we can...
Receive it for information.
For information, unless there's something that needs to be done. We'll move on to 5.4, the Minister of Senior Housing, Declaration of Senior Week. Kim just gave us the one sheet on it, there's a few more pages if you really want to...
The declaration is the standard one, but you see that just a bunch of blank lines in town of all the declares, it was, and a PDF, but we'll go along with poster if...
And do we do that automatically or do we have to have a motion?
You'd have, you'd have to have a motion to declare, so.
Since I'm a senior, I'll...
Okay, so Laura moves 5.4, the Declaration of Senior Week for 2019. Any thoughts, questions? Karen, I'll call a question. And it's Karen, unanimously.
I believe there was a tea or a luncheon on June 3rd.
On the 3rd, yeah.
The library?
Senior Center, yeah.
Which seems appropriate.
Yeah. And on the...
Would that be a member to go to? A member of the Senior Center?
I'm not sure.
Because I said, all right, lunch. They said, oh, you're not a member, you can't. Oh, oh, oh.
Whoa, wow. Sounds like something we talked about at the beginning of this meeting.
I know, so I should report that. That's what I should do.
All right, well, anyway, you guys move on.
Moving on.
We'll move on to 5.5, revised, uh, so...
Kim will speak to that. I want to thank Laura, the library has recently updated their bylaws. Now, through the Libraries Act, they are required to submit them to the Town of Vulcan. You do not have to approve them, that's why they are for information, but you can disapprove them and send them back to the library to be revised. That's why they were there for everybody to peruse and if you are happy with it, you can receive it for information. If not, we'll have to bring the concerns and give them to the Chair of the Library Board, who is sitting there smiling.
Well, any questions on it? I couldn't see anything, except for I did get a free wrapped library card for the last couple of years, you know.
And it's free for everyone now?
It's free.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Here, I had one for so long and I thought that it was a great big deal there and it really was just a free...
Well, no, but when you got yours, it was a big deal.
It was a big deal.
I never used it anyway, but...
Well, that's...
That's my problem.
You could piggyback on our weekly trip.
So any questions on the revision on the library boards or is there any concerns that we wish to bring to the library? I didn't see any personally, but I appreciate them for them.
I'm sure I didn't have the issues.
Okay, any questions on any of those? So what we'll do is we'll move the rest of the items for information, which will move that one too, so.
So...
Paul moves the remainder of his information. Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Karen, I'll call a question. And it's Karen, unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports, financial reports. Cash statement.
How are we doing, Kim?
As you can see, we have about 1.1 million. Of course, we are about to send our tax notices, we are printing, they're going to be sent out at the end of the month. The 1.1 falls just what we, with our reserves that you saw when you approved the last meeting, so.
Okay, any questions on your...
With that for information?
Thank you, Laura. Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Karen, I'll call a question. And that's Karen, unanimously. Okay, year-to-date.
That must mean it's my turn, Justin.
You two share, thank you.
At least we know you guys are looking at them, so that's a, it's a good thing.
I didn't notice anything outstanding.
No, the big thing is, of course, tax notices with our revenue from general taxation that will mostly happen through the month of June. We have made a payment to the school foundation, even though they haven't, won't be setting a budget in the fall, and the majority of it, if you believe in just the simplest math of the, we have a $6 million budget, we're four months into it, so if you divide that out, should be about $2 million, we're just under that for our expenses. That's the simplest math of it. If there's any individual line item questions, they're all very straightforward from last month.
Okay, receive for information. Paul moves. Any question on Paul's motion? Karen, I'll call a question. And it's Karen, unanimously. Okay, moving on to bylaw number 148419, Intercylical Development Council.
We've been working on this IMDP for a couple of years now. The committee has gone through, you all attended the open house that we had in...
Not at all.
Everybody that was here, that was able to attend. We're there, the feedback was brought back, the committee met again and it's gone through and Horsh has put together a plan, which you've all had the opportunity to read, nothing like an 82-page document in the middle of your agenda. But, so for this, we're going to try to jointly advertise the public hearings, but we're going to hold individual public hearings, one for the county and one for the town. So the process for this will be to provide first reading, then you have to do your public hearing, and from your public hearing, you can do second and third reading. The timing of this, scheduling and coordinating with the county council meetings, we'll do first reading now. The public hearing won't be until the mid to end of July. The county's going to hold theirs on the 17th of July and we're going to hold ours just following that, so.
Financial report, please.
We're going to do it immediately following, so...
Because the 17th is it?
Yeah, so their council meeting is on the 17th and so ours will fall on the 22nd because of the, that month, I think, five months. So they will do their public hearing and first meeting, or second and third reading on the 17th and we will do our public hearing on the 22nd and our second and third reading if we receive no feedback. If it receives feedback after this first reading and the public hearing, it may be postponed to do revisions and then break back for the second and third.
Okay.
So it's finally loaded. If you have any questions, the only thing that changed after the open house was there was concerns over wind generation on the west side of town because it was excluded completely. And that was revised to include but nothing over 100 meters, which, it was their laser 100 meters, so. And what it allows for is a smaller agricultural generation, so nothing that will be on site anymore.
Well, the disadvantage or advantage on the west side unfortunately is the airport too, so, you know, they, it would put some restrictions on some of that too.
So this was, this was a clause that was added. Commercial scale, we have development agreements within their ridgeline portion of the area. Structure plans shall not be supported, but then they will, smaller generation will be supported, height no greater than 100 feet in commercial scale outside the area or ridgeline west of the area are not subject to the policy. So that's how we address that.
Is Ryan still our first member?
Yes.
Okay, so any thoughts or questions? If not, somebody wished to meet first reading?
Somebody?
None of them. Okay, any question on Lyle's motion? Karen, I'll call a question. And that's Karen, unanimously. Okay, moving on to FCSS. Appointment of Member-at-Large?
I'll move the appointment.
Okay. Paul moves the appointment of...
That's recommended.
Mr. Buckle.
It's your turn.
Okay, any thoughts, questions?
I have a question, but it has nothing to do with Mr. Buckle being avoided. It is, this was submitted by Bonnie to town council.
Yes, that was a click of the wrong...
Oh, okay. I just, because I see Carol down here and then I see Bonnie up there, I thought, oh, maybe things will change.
No, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
We have a, we have a drop-down bar that picks names, that was, I caught that this morning.
Okay.
Didn't republish the...
No, not probably, I was just curious. Okay, so the Paul's motion on the floor, any questions? Karen, I'll call a question. And that's Karen, unanimously. Okay, moving on to Vulcan County Annual Barbecue closure request for the street. It's on the Friday.
So this has happened over several years and it actually works out quite well in the town's favor because the county picks up a bunch of tables, moves them down to Main Street, they have their barbecue and then they move them back and they move the beer carts for us. So it actually, it, by approving it, it works out very well to, to support each other's setup for Spok Days. And they've done this for several years. They've done this for several years.
I was just picturing a phone.
Okay, Georgie moves it. Okay, any question on Georgie's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And that's carried unanimously. Again, thank you. Okay, moving on to multi-jurisdiction Travis. Multi-jurisdiction.
So, the Travis is a transportation... You've read the report. It tracks heavy loads, overweight, that sort of thing. It was voluntary and based on the new change in government. Saw the report there. We got a phone call saying it's voluntary, but we aren't everybody... We want everybody on it, so.
Strongly recommend?
Yeah, it was even a little.
Stronger than that?
Stronger than that. We mentioned that we don't track overweight through our community, and that we would get very little value from it, but they still want everybody to participate. So, we confirmed that there is going to be no additional paperwork, no additional cost to the community. So, it's simply adding our name to the list. So, based on that, we made... Greg had a good conversation with them, and that we brought it to council. If you're in agreement, we'll sign it into the agreement and become a member of the multi-jurisdictional.
Okay, we're supposed to be reducing red tape. Maybe this does just make it more notification.
There is some background on it. One of the things that it does is it does on the red tape side, more for the municipalities, but less for the contractors that are having to take out permits. They only have to take it out in one place. They don't have to do each municipality, that sort of thing. So, the... Because that was my comment, is there's more paperwork, and that was explained from the user's side, there's going to be way less. So, that's part of that red tape.
Okay, so, do you think, should we participate? Okay, Paul moves if we participate. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we will call the question. And that's carried unanimously.
So, with everyone being through on the 534.
534.
That's not really ours or anyone's.
It's a provincial highway, yeah. The only place that it would is it will give us a heads up if something's coming in. So, if we, for instance, had a house moving in, technically, we should know both of them, but.
And you had to pick green bins.
That's right.
Well, sometimes it would be almost a little... Sometimes a little nicer on the heads up too, that, you know, if somebody asks you, you know, then they can say, well, we were notified. We knew about it or.
And we can share our information. So, if we were to lower the ban on First Avenue South, they would know as well.
Anyway, okay, moving on to 84, Commercial Development Incentive. These have been the applications.
So, we received review.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'm being is how we sold this person this property. Do I need to... I mean, it's already been sold. It's time, but do I need to step out of this? I don't want to look like I have any particular interests.
You don't stand to financially gain from that.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't see it, but.
You've already gained.
If this was done before the property was sold, maybe, but.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. I mean, if you feel compelled, you can still step out.
As long as you're fine with it, I'm fine with it.
There's nothing for you or your company to financially gain from this.
Okay.
So, the background of this is this property has been purchased, and they've been developing on it, and it's for a company that was already existing in the community. And they had moved from a home-based business to a, obviously, a brick-and-mortar commercial real estate spot. So, they fit the team for option two of our business incentive. So, it was reviewed by the development officer, and it was kind of funny when the application came in. It hit every criteria of what the policy was putting vice for. So, it was a pretty easy recommendation to bring to council for this one. So, there's nothing on it that really stands out at all.
Okay, any thoughts, questions on this one? If not, somebody wished to move it? Laura, Laura, Laura.
That was a mouthful.
Sorry, Laura.
That's okay.
You might have to turn your name towards me, so.
He does have issues.
I do have issues. I call people lots of different names.
As long as they're named and not something.
We're good to go.
A few years ago, Rick and Paul's were always turned this direction.
Anyway, so Laura moves that we accept this one. Any question on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Again, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 8.5, Commercial Development Incentive.
So, every year, council, when as soon as the mill rate's done, you can't... Through the policy, you've approved the forgiveness of taxes, but according to the MJ, you have to forgive every year as its own year. So, basically, what I've done is put the roll numbers on the motions where you've actually accepted. And so, 2016, you accepted roll 86,000. 2019, at the beginning, motion number 75, you accepted the one for roll 88,300, and you just passed the one for 7800. So, as the report says, you must annually review. The impact is a refund of $2,697 in total. And so, by doing a formal motion here, it will allow us to forgive. And we don't actually forgive it, we actually refund it. So, we still levy the same amount and then refund that, so they just pay the difference. And we only... Council can only refund the municipal tax portion. You can't refund the lodge or the school because those are requisitioned down.
Or local improvements.
Local improvements are as well, but.
Yeah, but none of these do qualify, but we just.
Nothing can waive a local improvement as well. Once it's there, you can't waive it unless you pay the whole thing out, out right.
Okay, so any questions on these three pieces of property? Okay, now that's entertain a motion to.
Laura stuck up her hand.
Laura, did you stick up your hand?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, 2006, or no, number 86, the 2019 show home incentive program.
So, this follows the same criteria as the business incentive, but council put motion, policy PL 01 to allow show homes to be built. The purpose of this was to waive the municipal tax for a house that's sitting empty for a developer. And by developer, we went through when you guys did the policy, what qualifies as a developer, how many homes, those sort of things. We currently have three homes that qualify for this incentive, and the total refunds for this will be $9,800, which we've accounted for in the budget. And the good news for this is at least one of them has sold, so it can come off right away where they start paying taxes. So, that's the whole purpose of this, is to give the developer an advantage to be able to sell these homes.
But if he's.
And he's, yeah, he's taken out a development permit for another show. So, that's the incentive looks, appears to be working.
Good. Okay, so any thoughts, questions?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Lyle moves it. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to reports.
South Grove.
So, how did I miss South Grove? Sorry.
Because Laura and I had it last minute.
No, that's right.
What?
Okay, yeah, I did read this one.
You gave me lots of noise, but.
Because I put Lyle's name beside South Grove instead of somebody else's. Okay, so this is a.
I apologize for the quality of the bottom. South Grove's having their AGM in Clarlesville, and Counselor Armstrong is attending as a member, but has the having presentation and some keynote speakers. And we received a guest invitation with our membership. Laura was asking if any counselors were interested in attending, because we do have the one free. But if any more than that, we'll have to purchase extra tickets. So, we put together the report, and if any counselors wishing to attend.
As alternate, like I think it would be really.
Okay, anybody else wants to go, or?
What are your thoughts on it? Do you recommend?
I'm not saying anything after the last time.
Getting everybody to go down to a.
Well, I thought it was quite good. I saw this in January when I was watching you on the screen. Didn't seem like it was that well received, so I'm scared to say, please come. I don't know, I thought it would be interesting to hear the fellow that's the fellow from Jeff from Clarlesville that's running the new.
The campus.
This is one in Clarlesville or is this one in Staley?
Oh, and I don't know. Somebody just said it was Clarlesville, but it might be.
Well, no, it could be, because there's one in Clay... Well, it's not really in Clarlesville. It's really in the MD, but.
Oh, okay, and I don't know. Someone just said.
Well, there's one in Staley too, and I was wondering which one it was. I think it's the one in, because by the looks of it, because one in Staley is just a building. You can't see into it.
Brady, the development officer from Clarlesville, used to be in the CAO in general.
Oh, that's why he looks familiar.
Yeah. Anyway, so Michelle would like to go. If anybody else wants to go, like I said, you can... We'll have to have a motion to.
We can just make the motion for attendance, council wishing to attend.
Yeah, and then that allows you to, if you want to, just you need to get ahold of.
Karen, so we can get a ticket anyway.
This is one way to get people to come to your AGM, I guess.
Yeah, charge.
Yeah. Okay, somebody wished to make this motion to allow council... So, Laura? See, I caught that, but I was looking at your name.
Excellent, I'll remember you perfectly.
Thank you. I need all the help I can someday.
And then she'll look at, he'll look at Thomas, and you'll call Tom.
Okay, so, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I will call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, now onward and upward to reports. Thank you. The golf course record.
Apologies on this one. I'm running one meeting behind. I think I'm caught up now.
That's all right. More better than me, that's for sure. Any questions on any... Sorry, did you get the sand traps in on the...
I mean, it's not on this, but did you get the sand traps in on the?
The par three?
The par three.
Yeah. Nope, it looks like they're just about ready to go. I'm working on it today, whatever.
I woke this quarter on your Saturday morning. I had an open house, and there was like hundreds of people, thousands of people down by the drive.
It was the membership, or the club member, club member tournament. I'm not sure if that was the name of it.
Okay, any other questions on that? All right, we'll move on to the Town Valley Region Water Commission. Any questions on any of that one there?
And there was a question about water licenses as being resolved or in the process of being resolved.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you know, with a lot of this stuff too, is that as the commission gets older, if there isn't a bit of continuity into it, you know, then you have to start searching for information of why things were done a certain way or not. So.
Cathy resolved.
I figure we provided enough information that Cathy had enough to go back.
Good. Okay, any other thoughts, questions on that one? Okay, moving on to NPC. Okay, no questions on that one? We want to.
Actually, it is in the motion that you all permit, so on and so forth, be denied as it does make the setback, as it does not make the setback.
Oh, that's what it's spelled like.
It's a grammar, isn't it?
Right above 6.2.
Yeah. It should be a not meet that.
Right, okay, so.
But that's for them to.
Yeah.
Grant it. Nancy corrected before.
Yeah.
It goes to them too, so.
No, but it was, it was while they jumped out and.
Yeah, well, I didn't meet it. I thought, oh, it wasn't approved, but great, you know, or not great.
But it does meet the setbacks.
I didn't think it met the setbacks, and I didn't question that not being there. Anyway, anything else on that one? If not, we'll move on to Orsk's executive minutes. Okay, any question on that one? If not, somebody wished to file the...
Nothing.
Georgie Lee. Okay, any question on Georgie's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to Mr. Taylor.
Hey, you got my water one, you got my NPC, you got golf. The only other one I went to was Seawat AGM on Friday. This is very interesting, and there's your new Seawat chair.
Okay, I had to wait for a few minutes to get a call, but anyway. Any questions on Paul's attendance thing? Hearing none, we'll move on to Mrs. Bolt.
The only one I was at was the Water Commission, and we've all looked over those minutes. That's it.
Okay, any question for Georgie? Okay, Mr. Magnuson.
The only meeting I had was the Municipal Planning Commission, and we just looked at those minutes.
Okay, any question for Lyle? Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Thomas.
I had the library and VBIT. For the library, as you saw, we've updated the bylaws. We're planning a visit to see Calgary's new big library.
Well, that'd be neat.
Yeah, it should be interesting. Stepping into Art Night was once again a huge success. We had over 40 people this time, I believe, 42. I'm going to be attending the Board Basics in Coldale on the 15th of June. It's a library board basics, just gives you a basic overview. I'm also attending the Intro to Experience Development on the 3rd of June. As for VBIT, they have some money to pay back to CARES, which that check went today. They're doing Tech Town at Spock Days, and we're going to be doing meetings as needed. It's not going to be a monthly thing, but right now, we're looking into the assisted living pods, see what we can find out more info about those and see if they might be applicable or appropriate for this area.
Okay, any questions for Laura?
Okay, Laura, you realize we were looking into it from the town's point of view, right?
Well, we just, not necessarily just for town, but maybe. Well, we're just, um, not necessarily just for town, but maybe.
No, no, but I meant the whole county.
Yes, we're just doing a little bit of extra research. There's some things that people are interested in asking about. They're just gonna ask some questions.
Okay, no, I just wondered if you had realized that we were, as a town, we're looking into that.
Yeah.
And hopefully you'll be able to invite VBIT to partake in that in that information session.
Perfect.
Okay, Ms. Runge.
Um, on May twenty-first, I had the Elder Reviews Meeting, and it's kind of a lot of stuff coming up. June thirteenth to the seventeenth, it was, is the ribbon campaign, which Ruth mentioned she was here. Um, so we got permission from the town to go around downtown and on like the light standards and some of the size of the trees, put ribbons with information cards and facts about senior reviews and a lot of things, because there's a lot of information in terms of the specifics of financial abuse, and like there's a lot of areas that it's not hugely known about. So hopefully we're gonna be growing awareness on that. And we got a bunch of the cards nominated, or no, laminated, pardon me, um, to get that going, and I'll also be handing out the lapel ribbons as well. And June fourteenth, we're going to be having a lunch arena at the lodge from twelve to one, and it'll be something like an information session on the specifics of elder reviews and the support available, and as like Ruth was saying as well, um, hairdressers, anyone at the bank, um, like I was showing your council as well, kind of it has anybody that might be approached or commonly in that position might be approached. It's just information in terms of where we can best educate somebody in the community, so if they're approached by someone and need help, we can accurately say, absolutely, this is Nicole Larson Somerth, victim services, this is Rowan House, this is your options that we have in this community, um, just for information purposes, because I'm sure especially now that we're actually getting going, going, um, it probably won't be very long until we're gonna get forth for that. On May twenty-second, egg one, and we've done all the financial auditing for the year for the victim services, and third statement on the twenty-third was the Community Futures meeting, which was kind of a big one. It was the very first one that Sarah Noyes, who's the new general director at Community Futures, did completely all on her own, and she did fantastic, and there's quite a few changes kind of coming down the pipe, and like John, the previous general director was, it was General Matter, had been in there for twenty-five years, so it's definitely lots of exciting stuff. Unfortunately, definitely our budget this year because of various things that come up, we're gonna, we have a little bit of funding challenges happening, so we're really trying to focus on savings opportunities and other trying to revenue streams. So that was quite the one. And on May twenty-seven, or earlier on today, sorry, there was a victim services regular meeting as well as a victim services AGM, preceding it this morning, and so we got all the new, couple new elected officials, or elected executives, um, in and went over kind of the same digital, we, I talk about quite a bit, victim services, how we're redoing all the policies, and we're usually do and look at one to two policies per meeting, um, just kind of condense things, so it saves time. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anything for Michelle? Any questions?
I have a question, I don't know if I should answer, if you can answer it here. What is the interest rate on a Community Futures loan, or is that something that you can see?
It entirely depends on kind of the business of that individual case, like I know.
Oh, I see, so it varies.
Yeah, there's all kinds of different, um, programs to fit in, and then depending, like I know chamber members, as an example, get a better interest rate and get a break on their interest rate for loans than non-chamber members. So it's kind of.
So if you were a chamber member, say here, but you applied over there, yeah.
Yeah, it would completely, because we're all the territory for that Community Future Highwood area.
I just had someone ask me, is that a dog?
Yeah, um, yeah, and I'm wondering if I should like email her, does everybody have more information in terms of, um, Sarah Noyes, the Community Futures office, and I suppose?
Well, I think we could contact you. We would.
Or that too.
Okay, Lyle?
Uh, Michelle, just in regards to the chamber, have you got any financials? Yeah, regarding, see how successful the trade show was? I mean, it looks like everything went really well.
Um, there hasn't been anything that's come out yet, because unfortunately, I'm sure it wasn't able to be at our last meeting.
Oh.
In two days, I'll know.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, anything else for Michelle? Okay, moving on to Laura.
Uh, most of my meetings are this week, but of the market, uh, four of us met with the CAO for the Markets Foundation's Business Plan for twenty-twenty, sounds like million years away, and for, so it's for a three-year plan, and we got most of that put together last Thursday. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Okay, for me, I have a SEWA executive and, um, the hospital, most of you probably have seen that they have started doing some digging and, and pouring footings, and then on Friday they closed the front entrance to the hospital, so they've torn all that out, so now you have to go all the way around the back. We did find out at the last meeting that it's gonna be for a year and four months, that that front entrance will be closed. Originally, they were just gonna close it, do some work, and then open it, then close it. Now they decided they're just gonna close it the whole time and make you go all the way around the back side of the building.
Is there enough parking around the back side?
No, you still have to park where you would normally park, but instead of going through the main entrance.
You have to walk.
No, you have to go upstairs, around behind the ambulance bay.
Yeah.
Uh, there's an entrance in there behind the ambulance bay. You don't have to go downstairs, you still, so. So we're meeting, you know, every two weeks as the program progresses, but, yeah, so anyway, it's, they're hoping to go get guns as long as Mother Nature keeps on being kind to them, and, but the front entrance is, the question on that one was, it's kind of disappointing because originally that was one of the reasons why they put off, uh, not doing it in the fall, because they had to, people had to close it for a whole year, or close it for the winter, now they're gonna close it for a year and a half, and it didn't seem to bother them, so I don't think that one right now, yeah. But anyway, and then Kim and the three or four of us met with, on the pool, and it's proceeding, um, they're trying to do some number crunching and get some numbers, yeah, so that we can bring it forward, but it's coming. And then, again, more on what Paul said, on last Friday, SEWA had their AGM, and unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever you wanna look at, for, this was for two years, and that's part of the problem with sometimes some organizations think that, you know, we can put it off our AGM, and then all of a sudden you've got two years of AGM to do, so our auditor, you know, had to approve two years, and so now we have to go back and ask for forgiveness for the year that we didn't have it any time, but, um, again, you know, there's always a discussion of, it's like every AGM that you go to, you know, why are we having it? We only get the few people that show up to any other one anyway, and, you know, maybe wanna have a deliverable, but it just shows that you need to have that AGM for your, if you're gonna become a society or a, um, a board like that, that you, you need to do it on a yearly basis or something. And like Paul said, I was a successful or unsuccessful candidate, and now I'm the chair of the SEWA organization for a period of time.
Did you have a good channel of people from other communities?
No, we met county, did send four, um, four of the counselors. County Council had three, um, we had two, um, we had the phone champions, so they would make sure they showed up, so we had a quorum. Arrow was there, um, and then the rest were just board members. So, there was a gentleman there from a biomass company that wanted to, um, he had a program to offer, but that was about it, so. They'll have a special meeting in, they're hoping August to September, once the sighting is done, the process, and with the sighting, none of us, there's only two people that know what's, they're already kicking going on with the sighting, all the names of the people, and that's Sherry and Ms. Paul, who's the lead on the, on the construction side. They're the only two that are meeting with HDR on, on the sighting, so that the rest of us can kind of be yards length away until we get closer to the, to the three.
It's Paul Ryan, not Paul.
Yeah, no, yeah, sorry, I apologize, thank you, thank you for correcting my call. Yeah, it's Paul Ryan, who's from, um, Big Horn, um, Exchaw. And, and again, part of the reason too is their, their community hasn't put in an application, but, um, like I said, there's six other communities that have applied. One doesn't belong to the, to the group, but did, and so they'll shortlist it to three and then do some GM tech comments. Any questions, sorry?
Oh, sorry, no, I didn't have a question for you, but there was something I forgot to bring up.
Sure.
That, um, I got an email from Chaney a couple days ago, the regional rep org meeting is going to be the first party in June, and I forgot to put it down, ask councils permission to attend it.
Oh, do you know what that?
I think it's a large holiday, I think.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll need a motion to allow you to.
Attend.
Go, or, well, as a member, no, it's probably better to have a motion from council, right?
I did last year.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, because it's not an oral recreation meeting, so to pay the, uh, per diem.
Okay. Okay, so we'll finish the members, then we'll bring, come back down, okay, thank you.
You can do it in a motion right on the bottom of this.
Okay.
We can, we can do it in there, we can do it, we'll move it up under George Lee's report.
Okay.
I'm not sure the exact date it came in June, I know it was the first.
Doesn't matter, right?
Will it be before or is it after June tenth, because we can do it next week?
No, it was before June tenth.
Oh, okay.
So somebody break to motion to allow Laura moves? Sorry?
Laura?
Laura move the, allow George Lee to attend.
The regional rep meeting, we have to be, we can already ask her.
Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And that's carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so we should have one to file this.
That will still, yeah, yeah, you can file.
So I need a motion to file. Okay, Lyle got it?
I know, it was pretty close.
It was pretty close. Okay, so Lyle moves that we filed verbal reports, council reports. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. Yeah, I know, it was close. Okay, that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to last two. Activity.
Activities report, you can see that, uh, majority were able to remove, we have, I spoke to Dr. Brown, uh, they've provided us with one date that works for them, so we are in the process of making sure that we can arrange something for that date, and it was.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second of July, so, and we're, yes, we.
That's the IMCP, probably in public hearing day.
No, that'd be in the evening.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, it is, that's one of our, that's our regular council day, so we're most likely going to have to have that meeting and then move straight over here to our council meeting, depending on how that works, so, uh, we're, depending on the feedback we get, we're gonna try to book it in the watch hall, and, uh, as we get closer to it, if there's going to be some expenses and that, but towards that, we're gonna have the councils, uh, we'll need a motion for, uh, what expense we put to, to this as well.
Okay, any other questions on the activity report? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the CEO's mid summer.
Mid May report, you all have a chance to go through it, um, one, uh, the notables, this is, we're still working with Ari, Ari West to negotiate on that industrial land requirement. The, uh, information that I emailed out to you, uh, has come back, uh, they're looking at, uh, quicker timelines, uh, more, more of an ass tax breaks, things like that, and based on an email that I received at four thirty today, I'm actually, I think that we're going to move towards them just coming to council, making a proposal, because the negotiations get a little bit labored with that, so they can break forward the information, let you guys kind of chew on it and ask them, uh, some of those harder questions, because we're having trouble getting some answers on some of those, so. The rest of it, pretty straightforward, hosted a regional emergency management meeting, that was just with the CAO's to keep moving the plan forward, filling, uh, we're working on the emergency plan itself, so, uh, just clarifying some of the things like evacuations, where people go, how, how we're gonna do that, so march making, some pretty good progress with that, uh, was able to put in contact with, uh, pals, or is actually getting some of their emergency planning right now. And other than that, uh, just pretty straightforward business in the last two weeks, unless there's any questions on Lyle.
I've been asked a couple things, I probably should ask Tom to, just, uh, for the, for the pool, any idea whether we can be able to see some plans?
I think until we can get everything tightened up, um, there's no use showing our set of plans, because they might change, and then everybody would say, well, why did it change?
We, we meet every two weeks, and they look completely different every two weeks, based on the feedback we get from the weeks before, so.
And the thing is too, you know, it's, it's quite a, you know, it truly is quite a process, I mean, it's, it's probably, um, a little bit more difficult than what I, challenging than what I think it should, could be or should be, but yet, you know, they wanna make sure they dot all the i's and cross all the t's to make sure that when they can come back, they feel comfortable that they're gonna be in our budget range and be able to produce what we believe we want or need.
We don't wanna show a picture of something, because people take that as gospel and then come back and say, well.
Yeah.
Now it's changed completely again.
And that's the same thing, like, like Kim said, you know, like even the, even amongst the groups, they even questioned some of their things, and they take it back and tweak it a little bit, and then, then there's a, you know, then they take it back and try and do some cost thing.
If, if we were to show them the four different phases of the building, it's completely different from even the one version that you guys saw, just based on, on cost analysis and how, how we move forward, so. And the worst part is, is when you show a group of people a picture like that, they pick the part that they like, and then they won't like over the rest of it, and so it has to change, so we wanna make sure that my hand goes to council and to the public.
To close.
This is after this, this is what we can tell for, for this budget.
The, the group is still trying to, you know, abide by the wishes and the wants of the community, but to realize that, you know, some of those wishes and wants are, are gonna have to be more the wishes side of scale, and, um, and maybe be planned for, but yet not in place today, I think that's it, so.
And one more thing, I had a conversation with a person that was trying to tell me that Volcan's slowly dying and that nothing's going on here, uh, just with the, for argument sake, with the hospital, now that it's going again, so it was like, it sounds dying, uh, how are we on, uh, you were saying it's a year and a bit now to, before we use the print, how are we compared to this, on, how are we on schedule compared to where we thought we were going to be possible?
Oh, oh, we're gonna be behind, and then that's, there was a, that was the last meeting, there was a huge discussion that went on, because, um, from the time that they planned it to be, has increased by four months, uh, longer for construction without the four-month break, so there, I think there was some miscalculation in that, so I just got an email earlier showing the new schedule, so I haven't, didn't get a chance to go through the schedule. We meet on Thursday again. Um, we, like I said, it's every two weeks, they meet to go over some things and some of the concerns, uh, they have a site meeting that morning, and then they go from the site meeting to, to the meeting with the board, so.
It's just nice to see things going again.
It is, it's great to see, you know, for a bit there, and that was just like in what the AGM for SEWA, Martin Shields was there, and of course, that was one of his concerns too, you know, that whenever there's a stop and then a government change, you know, there's always a concern, is that gonna change the philosophy of what's gonna go on? and then a, uh, government change, you know, there's always a concern, is that gonna change the philosophy of what's gonna go on? And, uh, obviously it hasn't, it's been very positive, and so, uh, gut hole, and I think in the next, you know, couple weeks, you'll see lots of concrete being poured, so.
For answering the question about the, the community dying and that, uh, there, lots of things can be brought up, like our business incentive, knowing that we have people applying for it, and it's working. Uh, the show home incentive, showing that we have homes, that new homes being built and sold. And, uh, just the view of our main street, we had a couple million dollars invested in our main street in the last two years, or three years, that's, uh, it, it's a testament to that, that we, we are, we're not growing leaps and bounds, but we're, we're still holding our own, that's.
It was from a person that was at a time that has no idea what's going on, so.
Well, you know, and I, and I guess, you know, like, I have, one of our board members from, uh, this Larry, right from OZ, you know, which right now is really kind of bursting at the seams to a degree. But, you know, he was really still impressed, like he was impressed with the streetlights, he was impressed with the, you know, the condition of our town, even though, you know, we do have cracks and, you know, bumps and humps in our streets and that, but, you know, he, he was just really impressed with the, what the small community can deliver. And, um, if you go around to other communities, I mean, we all go through those lumps and humps, and, um, if we could just land a couple good, uh, small industries in our community, it would just be so much better to move it forward, but.
Grow the ones we have.
Or, yeah, and, and hopefully, you know, that, that these things will progress.
That's my report, last questions.
Yeah, anything else for Kim? If not, somebody wish to move the administrative post? Lorna? Any question on Lorna's motion? Hearing none on favor? Oh, no, sorry.
I just. I just called the whole meeting.
Sorry, folks, uh, called the question, and it's all unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, we have one more motion. Michelle, any question on Michelle's motion to adjourn? Hearing none, call up a question. Just a little bit through a whole meeting and make it quite.
Yeah, I was supposed to say something different, yeah.
I guess it's not unanimous that we wanna go home. Yeah, it's carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. The other day you talked.
Just gonna stop, because I need to wait to thirty seconds.
Talked to, um, Mr. David.
We're here.
There.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. After you show me that, I have a question. I, I need to show the, uh, the, the, I think it's, I'll be there, but I got a location at Paul's, I have to have it three years, so.
It'll be a piece of.
Yeah, I know, uh.